Hello, Andrew.
Hey, Dan. How are you doing?
I'm okay. How are you today?
Not too bad.
Good.
Forgot to print out the stuff. I'm gonna have to have a second, second screen up here that I can refer to.
Okay. There's a lot of material, so. But Janelle did a really good background information report, so if you can get to that, that's page three and four. That will give you a pretty good overview. Hello, Bonnie.
Hello, everybody.
Hello. Hello, Glenn.
Hey, everyone.
In the beard race, you're still losing, Glenn.
Yeah, I know. I know. I like to keep it trimmed, though.
Okay.
And that's the thing I get away from it. I do it more for convenience in the winter than for aesthetics. I don't think my wife actually likes it.
Hello, Tim.
Hey, Tim.
You still have yourself muted, Tim.
Sorry about that. Good evening.
We're pretty good at lip reading when you were this close. We need Rob yet. Hey, Tim, maybe you could turn down your music a little bit.
Ah, okay, sure.
Send Rob a note. Thank you.
You're welcome.
There he is. Hello, Rob. Okay. Okay, well, it is six o'clock, and it looks like we are all here. Anne Marie is not able to join us tonight. But Janelle is here and will be controlling the screen this evening, and we have what looks like 11 participants as well, or 11 attendees, as well as seven of us. So we are here. It is Tuesday, October 20th at six o'clock, and we're here for a public meeting, a public hearing, a public hearing to discuss and consider an ordinance to amend the Articles for Use Regulations and 10 Streets and Other Infrastructure of the Chapter 197 zoning of municipal code of the city of Lewis, Delaware, by adding wireless facilities to the Section 197-44 permitted uses and structures and Section 197-83 other utilities. A planning commission recommendation for this is item number 641. In the packet that we all received was information, a report from Janelle providing an overview of what was discussed at the planning commission, as well as the actual draft ordinance as as it has been written. Glenn, do you have anything you want to add before Janelle gets us started here?
Other than it's been properly noticed, and this is the time and place for the public hearing, nothing to add, Mayor. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Looks like Tom West has also joined us. Hello, Tom. Good. So Janelle, I think we'll rely upon you to go ahead and give us the overview if we could.
Absolutely. I just want to give a few ground rules when we get to the public comment, public hearing section.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Sure, please do.
So everybody who's participating and would like to make comments, please place your comments in the chat, and please identify your name and your address for the record, so we can have a clear record of who is attending the meetings. That would like to thank you for that. So this was actually done between Tom and myself. Tom did the big chunk of the ordinance work, and I worked on the design standards. So what we did is we recognized there's a need for looking at small cell wireless facilities. A lot of them are going to be known as 5G. So what we did was we created an ordinance regarding that, and if Tom wants to give a quick overview of that, and then I dive into the design standards.
Sure. So we've permitted wireless facilities, the big towers, for a number of years. The technology's been changing, and a number of municipalities have seen the need to clarify their standards. One of the things that municipalities struggle with is they don't have standards on the books when Verizon or the wireless companies come into their town, and then they're behind the eight ball with it because they don't have standards. So we have attempted the planning commission, working with the planning commission, to address standards. The federal governments adopted wireless facilities regulations. The states adopted them. So the work that was done, working with the planning commission for Lewis, is to adopt expanded zoning regulations for the newer types of wireless facilities, to embed those into the code, also to do design standards, which Janelle can talk a little bit about. And one of the unique circumstances in the city is that the Board of Public Works owns a number of the utility poles, and in that case, the wireless companies oftentimes will come in to look at co-locating on those poles. So we worked quite a bit with representatives from Board of Public Works to determine the best process for when an applicant comes in for any type of wireless facility, be it a 5G, which is a small pole to a large tower, which process, which review process would be most applicable, how they would do it, and how it works into the zoning code. So the city adopted as proposed zoning regulations. That's what the city controls, along with design standards. Many of the co-location applications are likely to come into the city via the Board of Public Works, and the application process is set up that way. So they're still under the jurisdiction of the zoning use regulations, but they'd be, for those types of applications, reviewed by the Board of Public Works. The other ones that aren't on those poles, the process is set up to run through building officials, and then some are conditional use. So they would go to the planning commission and then to council for review. The zoning amendment outlines what types of facilities are permitted, where they're permitted, the review process. The design guidelines talk about the details. That's not in the zoning ordinance. That'll be a separate document. There's also been an application form created to handle which type of facility goes where. And the last document is the Board of Public Works Poll Attachment Agreement. That's not a city document. It's their document. It governs their processes. So that's an overview of the process. Again, it's a proposed zoning amendment that you're looking at tonight, but I just wanted to cover some of those other pieces in my description.
Thank you, Tom. Janelle?
So for the design guidelines, we wanted to focus on where they were going to be located and what they were going to look like when they are located. So we came up with a number of criteria for both small cell wireless facilities and the large-scale telecommunications towers. So you see both of those in the proposed design standards. What we looked at was if you're gonna, of course, we're encouraging co-location. What we want is co-location. Use an existing tower, light pole, you know, stop sign, you know, those existing street furniture items that we already have within the city. Utilize that, rework that to get the wireless facility onto that, less items in the right of way. We also recognized if we're going to do that, we want it to match, looking at making sure it matches whatever, like the look and the concept of the pole it's going to be attached to. We also recognize there will be places that you won't be able to put, you won't be able to co-locate, just maybe because of certain other items going on. So if you're going to be placing a new pole, new tower, or structures, and requirements regarding that, mainly those were like clear height, which is, you know, the height from the ground to the bottom of the structure. So there's a minimum height. More or less, if you think about it, it's like, okay, if somebody has like a sign coming off their building, it's up high enough so you don't hit your head. That's the distance between the ground and the bottom of that, the clear height. We've had a couple of questions on that. We've also looked at requiring a separation distance from another antenna within 300 feet. We allow, would allow an increase in the height of the existing structure, but only by 10%, which that's actually in keeping with the federal regulations regarding antennas. You know, making sure that if you're going to put a cabinet, everything is out of the way. You will be running into it when you're walking. And one of the big things that was requested by, and was discussed by the planning commission and by the wireless facilities, was a waiver ability. These are design standards. They are not going to be codified. We recognize that the technology is changing. And again, we're looking more like the aesthetics and the placement, so we design standards that we could change frequently. But we also recognize there might be a need for a waiver. So at the planning commission, there was a long discussion about how the waiver process would work. And then the commission, the planning commission, could grant waivers from the design standards. And if there was an appeal process, then that would become before the mayor and city council, if there was a disagreement regarding the granting or non-granting, the denial of a waiver. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And I know we do have in attendance representatives from Verizon and AT&amp;T.
No, I guess I have a question on that part, then. So if you approve something, and let's say the council disagrees, what's the trigger there for the council to stop it from going forward?
On a waiver?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, on a waiver, there is no appeal to the city council, correct? Janelle, it's planned.
Oh, I thought you.
The appeal goes to city council, but the request for the waiver goes to planning commission. And then if, say, the wireless facility doesn't like the decision made by the planning commission, they have the ability to appeal that to council.
Okay, but if you approve it, there's no way for the council to say, oh, we wouldn't want that to be approved. If, in this case, if it's approved, it goes forward. Okay.
Right. And we did that based on, it was again, a lengthy discussion at the planning commission meeting regarding who should have that, you know, what authority, and it was determined that since most of that is coming from the planning commission, or it it might just be, you know, a simple, simple item that, you know, if staff's reviewing, then instead of having it go through the long process, because again, there's a timeframe associated with some of this from the federal requirements. There's a short timeframe for certain processes that we could get it onto a planning commission agenda. And then, again, an appeal, if somebody had a concern with it, could take it to the council.
Janelle, we've also had some public comments already. We should probably recognize those.
Yeah, we just have the representatives from AT&amp;T and Verizon noting that they are in attendance for the meeting.
Right.
Janelle, will the representatives from the communication companies be making a presentation?
I know AT&amp;T has provided a presentation, and I know Verizon has provided some comments regarding the design standards. So I believe as part of the public process, you will allow them to speak.
Okay. Okay. Are there more questions before we go to those presentations, or do you want to hear the presentations first?
I'd like to hear the presentations first and then come back to Q and A.
Okay.
Myself, but.
I agree with Tim.
Okay, that would be my choice as well. Okay, so.
Don't try and open the public record just to make clear that they're part of the hearing process.
Sure. Thanks. Yeah, thank you. All right, so does Joe want to go first? Since he logged in first, you have his presentation that you.
I do. Let me allow him to talk, and then I will get his pre-share my screen.
All right, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Okay. Okay, all right, let me lessen this screen a little bit. Exit full screen. Okay, that way I can also have my notes. You know, this is, it's interesting doing this all virtually. All right, well, to mayor, council, and the staff in Lewis, thank you very much for being forward-thinking in putting together the ordinance and the design manual. What we'd like to do is I will give a presentation, and Bonnie Metz from Verizon will follow with some comments. We thought that instead of regurgitating, each of us regurgitating some things, it would be a little smoother. AT&amp;T is in alignment with the comments Verizon is making specifically to the design manual. So that's why we thought this would pass. This would kind of be good for the process. So next slide, please. Okay, just to start to give a sense of why we're here and why small cells are really part of wireless and the wireless network infrastructure. For AT&amp;T, since the iPhone came out in 2007, this is what our mobile data traffic, our wireless mobile data traffic, looks like. 580,000% increase since 2007. And we haven't seen any reduction in that, if you look at where that's going. If you look at what has happened during the pandemic, our global network now carries 391 petabytes of data traffic on a single day. And for a sense of proportion, a single petabyte is equal to the size of 10 million pictures on Facebook. So the amount of data that is going through our overall network and our mobile network is just, is growing at incredible pace. And I saw this statistic today. Today is apparently World Statistic Day, if anybody didn't know. Pre-pandemic, the peak on our network of texts per second on our wireless network is 15,000 texts per second. At the pandemic peak, our text per second on our wireless network was 23,000, 23,000 texts per second. So that's the type of proportion we're looking at. Next slide, please. Again, this is just a title slide, that small cells are really very important to keep up with the amount of traffic and the amount of demand on our network now and prepare for the future. Why small cells? I would call your attention to, again, the increase in data use. Data use being apps, streaming video, all variety of content, and mission-critical monitoring. A lot of medical telehealth monitoring is going on now, as well as public safety. A lot of public safety use is going through our networks. Providers have involved their networks over the years. We have to change our architecture to meet the demands of the technology and of the users. And I will stress here that our network architecture, the way the AT&amp;T network has evolved and operates now is distinct from Verizon or T-Mobile. We're now the three major carriers, I think, that serve Lewis. So it's important to understand that while there's similarities to our networks and how we operate, each is unique in how it has evolved, as well as how we operate, what our network needs are, and where our network needs are, and at what time our network needs to evolve with new infrastructure or other enhancements. Again, capacity is a big issue with respect to small cells. The analogy I have is they're like the off-ramps on a highway. You know, whether you look at coming down Route 1, I-95, any major highway, if traffic gets too congested, say, coming in Route 1 on a beach traffic on a summer Friday, you know what happens? Traffic slows down or stops. Same thing with the mobile network. If there's too much traffic on the network, it slows, it slows everything down. So small cells allow traffic to keep moving, just like an off-ramp does on a highway. Next slide, please. I think Janelle spoke about, you know, some of the various elements of wireless infrastructure, so I won't go into this too much. But really, you have the macro cell, which has been a traditional infrastructure mechanism that the wireless industry has used for, you know, many years, decades, in fact. And now, as we evolve to small cells and future small cells, meaning those that may carry, for our purposes, AT&amp;T purposes, 5G signals, other small cells that may not be doing 5G, you know, are used to 4G LTE to handle congestion and to add capacity. Next slide, please. And just, you know, these are two quick slides to kind of show just what makes up a small cell and how they're used. They really are very targeted network solutions. They are very location-precise in what their job is. So unlike, say, some of the macro facilities we've done over the years, that there may be a really large search ring, maybe a quarter of a mile, where we could locate the infrastructure. When you're talking a small cell, it can be as small as a city block that really has to go somewhere on that block for it to do its job with respect to the rest of the network. And again, it's, it does provide some flexibility. Small cells can enable us to add capacity without doing a large macro cell. Next slide, please. And just what's, you know, what makes up a small cell here? You know, there's fiber, there's coax that goes in it, there's power that goes to it. Usually, there's a small antenna at the top of it. And then you have a small radio box that has some of the mechanism that links to the fiber. And the fiber is very important because that's really what carries the traffic to wherever its destination is. Again, with the wireless network, all that's wireless really is between the device that is, that the consumer is using, whether it's a handset, a computer, and then the wire, the antenna atop whatever that piece of infrastructure is. Next slide, please. Where are they deployed? They really can be deployed really almost anywhere. And again, I will want to stress that it really, they really are location-dependent, and it's really, it's based upon the network engineers, what they're seeing with the traffic, how they can manipulate our traffic, and then deal with where we see congestion and where we see the need to meet, you know, our consumer demands and ensure that the network is running optimally for our customers. Again, it's about capacity or the utilization of the high-spectrum bands, and works off of the other macro cells in our network. Next slide, please. And I thought just, you know, in your packets, and it was a very complete packet, what small cells look like, these, we threw some in there just to add to, add to the mix, so you could really get a sense of what small cells look like. You know, we hear people use the term small towers, or they are really poles. they are really poles, and, and these are what some of our installations look like on, on utility poles. And as you can see, and not only utility poles can, can house small cells, whether there's, if there's transformer on there, or certain primary power, we're not able to use them for safety purposes or regulations of, in this case, your, your Board of Public Works. But certainly, they are street furniture that we try to use and co-locate, as Janelle said, whenever possible. And I look, if you look on the right, you can see the slim box that is on, that is part of the small cell, and then up top, you see that small antenna. So, next slide, please. And then in some cases, we are able to take street lamps and utilize them, whether we can use the structure as it exists, or sometimes we will do a drop, what we call a drop-in swap, where we will manufacture a pole to look identical to what is there, but make it so that it is robust enough, meets code, to withstand the additional weight that a small cell will put on. And as you can see on the left and the right, they're, they're colored, you know, differently to match what is on the street. So you can see that there's a variety of what these look like. Next slide, please. And here are two decorative examples that, that we've used, and over the years, as we've evolved our activity with, with small cells, we have engaged with the manufacturers of these decorative light posts and made arrangements for them, and have been real, been able to really come up with, with designs that meet, you know, what we see, what you see is already in the streetscape. And then, next slide. I think that's it. Okay, this is just the conclusion. I think really, you know, the this ordinance and the design manual really are going towards something that is balanced, a streamlined permitting process, and something that really can facilitate the deployment of small cells, you know, to bring enhanced coverage and capacity to, to your citizens. So I will leave it at that. I'll let Bonnie Metz maybe go into her presentation. I will be here throughout the hearing if there are any questions of me. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll let you determine next steps.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. And so I think we are ready to move on to Bonnie. Bonnie, thank you very much for your being here, Representative Verizon. Thank you.
Great. Thank, thank you so, so very much as well. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I wanted to first start with thanking Janelle and Ken and Glenn, and all those that worked on the ordinance and all the other, you know, desired standards. This is, it is a difficult subject to get your hands around because there's a lot of federal law that plays into it. So we wanted basically, I think on behalf of AT&amp;T and Verizon and all the providers, you know, say, say thank you for coming up with an ordinance that we believe is reasonable, and, you know, provides protections for the city with the design standards, et cetera, but also is consistent in most cases with the federal law, which obviously is important from our perspective as well. And, and thank you. I did provide comments early on on the design standards, many of which were included. So we appreciate that. In going back through them, there were some that were not, so I wanted to just raise them tonight before Council to just give you the reason and the rationale for them, to throw them out there, and, you know, obviously leave it to you whether to adopt them or not, but. So I narrowed them down in this document to just the ones that we really still had open issues on. We had suggested in, in the general requirements that the, the language to the extent feasible be added before all those requirements. And the reason for that, as Joe said, is these antennas and things, they change over time. We do not manufacture the antennas ourselves. They are done by different, you know, providers, manufacturers. So they may change them, we may swap things out as technology changes, and rather than going maybe to the planning commission or the waiver provision, we thought that maybe allowing the administrative process, you know, someone to make that decision, seeing as it generally isn't something that the company controls themselves. So we had suggested that, that that be included. The other thing that jumped out at me, and I apologize for not finding it sooner, was the addition of panel antennas. So the way that it's written right now, it appears to just cover the antennas, which are the 4G antennas that stick up on top of like a general pole. So you see them on the top. The 5G, at least Verizon's 5G millimeter wave antennas are panel antennas. So they actually go around the pole. They're circular, there might be two or three on each of the poles. And I think later on, I have a picture of, you know, something that's proposed that we're doing in Rehoboth. So I just thought maybe, you know, you could add that in there rather than have that need to go to the planning commission or through the waiver process as well. The other issue down in the placement and citing is that, as Joe, as Joe said, when we build out the network for 4G or 5G, there is a precise way that the RF engineers do it, and it's all based on mapping and modeling and, you know, saying what capacity needs we have in a particular area. So in B, we had suggested the minimum requirement that they be certain distances from each other could be troubling. So if we have a very densely populated area, so say, you know, I'm going to use Rehoboth and the boardwalk, or maybe right down Rehoboth Avenue, or some of your more populated areas, there may be a need from a network perspective to put them closer together because we have more people, more cars, more people in restaurants, et cetera. So the network is going to get more use. And so we had suggested changing the 300 feet to 150 because, for example, on, on the boardwalk, we have them, and some of them are spaced as closely as 110 feet from each other. The other thing is, this, we had, had put in the spacing requirements so that you would be spaced from your own pole, not one from another provider. Because if you put a 300-foot spacing from another provider, that may put me 600 feet away from my other node, which I can tell you in many cases will not give the coverage and the capacity that we need to serve those people using the network within those distances. So that's why we had suggested those two changes and wanted to bring that to your attention. In the citing prohibitions, it was the same, it's the same issue there. Generally, we see this, and in a lot of the other ordinance, it's, it's owned by the same provider. There are spacing requirements, but generally, they're not from another provider because I can't use that node that AT&amp;T puts up because I'm on a totally different spectrum. The other, the other issue here was the prohibition on putting the wireless facilities on Second Street. We absolutely understand that that is an area that is of importance to the city aesthetically, that, you know, it is a place that you, you want to make sure that, you know, it's pretty, and you can get your residents and visitors down there without having infrastructure that is not of the character that you're used to. But in some cases, again, this is just, we tried to limit when we would need to be there. But again, lots of times, such as Rehoboth Avenue, the places that we need to be are where, where most of the people are. So I think if you could move down or move to the next page, Janelle. So I just pulled these pictures up because I pulled that light that you have there, and Joe touched on this in his presentation. So this is just a mock-up, you know, photo sim of what we are doing on Rehoboth's boardwalk. And as Joe said, like, we have gone, we can go back to the actual manufacturers, which we did, of the lights on Rehoboth Avenue, or the lights that you have. And we can kind of retrofit the pole to put the majority of the equipment inside of it. We can, you know, we're using the same base in Rehoboth. We tried to make it the least intrusive that we, we could, recognizing that this is an area that is of importance, and you want a consistent look throughout the town. But we are losing, you know, the same luminaries. So we could manufacture a pole that looks almost exactly like that, that would just have the panel antenna, if it was a 5G node, around the top of it. So again, just wanted to bring that to your attention. There is some concern that like an absolute prohibition would violate the federal law as well. So just wanted to bring that up. But recognizing that you have provided a waiver provision as well, our only comment on that is that we generally see the waivers being done at the administrative level, whether it's through an escalation to the town manager, from the planning director, or the mayor, or something like that. The only concern that I think that, you know, we may have is the timing on this, and the timing that it might take to get through the planning commission, and then if anything, you know, gets appealed to the mayor and city council. Because the federal law does provide that if you're going to replace, you know, an existing structure, which I think Joe said, and I want to reiterate for, for you, is our preference. We do not like to place new poles unless we have to. We generally would like to go on an existing structure. In your case, you know, we would work with the electric company, but I think even they will tell you, there are structures that we just can't go on. In many cases, we were not allowed to use poles with primary power on them, or risers, or there's, there's lots of different requirements from safety perspective of who we're attaching to. So in any event, so we just have a concern maybe with that 60 days, whether, you know, it's going to be bumping up against the federal requirements. If it's a brand-new structure, the permit time is 90 days, so maybe wouldn't be as big of an issue. But again, just, just wanted to bring that to your, to your attention. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Bonnie. Okay, Council, I think we could move to questions from the table first, and then we'll get to questions from our attendees. We have a couple already, so. Anyone have a question? Tim, you.
I do have a couple of questions. I'd like to first start with some questions directed to Joe. And is it possible, Janelle, that you could go back to his slide presentation and pull up the slide where it showed the, there was a stop sign, and it looked like it was attached. Nope, I think you just had it right there. Perfect, perfect. Okay. Joe, my question is, is, is what I'm trying to, this, I'm trying to interpret this photo. Is this photo showing an adaptation of a stop sign being attached to a pole that AT&amp;T installed? Is that what this is an example of?
Yes, it was, it was a stop sign that was there, and, and that was the, I think, most the best use of of what was, what was an existing structure. Now, it wasn't a pole like a utility pole. But yes, so it, we, we worked with, you know, proposed that to, to the city, and, and so it still is a stop sign, but it also now works as a small cell.
Correct. Okay. And do I see in that, on, in that same photograph, above the stop sign on the right side, it looks like a black box. Is that part of your infrastructure? Right there, yes.
Yes, sir.
Is that?
Yeah, yes.
That's, and is that, what is that? Is that your, your antenna? What is that?
Radio equipment. The antenna is at the top of the pole. You can, really can't tell. It really blends in with the pole.
Right.
But yeah, the box is radio equipment that connects the antenna to the fiber. So you have, yeah, the radio box kind of runs the site.
Correct. Okay. And that radio box, it runs off of electricity. Is that correct, or is it battery power?
It's, it runs off electricity.
And is that, do you, is that something that is metered, or is that typically flat rate?
It all depends on, on who the power company is and what kind of arrangement, you know, is made between us and the power provider.
I see. And in your discussions with DPW, has there, the, the local provider here in Lewis, have you all come to an arrangement there?
We have not entered into discussions with DPW yet.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Do I understand correctly that the, if I understand correctly, you've, you said that the antenna, your, your, your equipment cannot go on poles that have primary, that is a high-voltage cable on it, correct? Or high voltage electricity distribution?
I think that, that, the, the, there can be prohibitions on, on what poles we can go on based on power company regulations and how they operate their system of infrastructure, so.
Right, because I think the photo you showed, the example you showed, actually showed, I believe there was primary cable, primary voltage on that particular pole that you showed, and.
And I think we went way above it. That was, that was a drop-in swap. That was a drop-in swap. The, the pole that was there originally.
You might go back, Janelle.
Yes.
Go ahead, Joe, please.
So the pole, depending on the height of the node that we're trying to do, and the, the height of the pole, in this case, the pole was replaced with a higher a pole that was higher, and we were able to put the node atop the, the other wires. But there are times when primary power has prohibited us from, from going on, or say, a transformer or something like that. It really is up to the, to the, to the, the electric entity and what they will allow us to do.
Okay, that's not a matter of the National Electric Safety Code, but actually the local provider, is that correct?
You know, Councilman, it may be both.
Okay.
I'm getting, I'm swimming, starting to swim outside my lane.
Okay. And I may put you back in some waters that you're used to swimming. Let's talk about communities that have underground service, underground utilities, underground electricity, existing communication, including, of course, cable, is all underground. Do you have any photos that show examples of what your small cell infrastructure looks like in those kinds of communities? And this is a question directed to Bonnie as well. She might have some pictures. She might have.
I don't, I don't have any pictures, per se. We have, you know, that's, it's, it's usually a discussion between the carrier, the provider, their vendor, and the municipality because there's not something there with which to, to use. There may be a streetlight, but then it becomes a discussion as to what might be the most appropriate in that situation. So it could be a decorative pole or something, you know, something else. I don't think it necessarily changes the design, per se, but it's more of a, I think, a more of a discussion as to what's appropriate in that location. It, it generally, you know, it, it, it adds a degree of difficulty because something is not there. So you don't, we don't have that as a first option to look at based upon location of, of infrastructure and the needs of the network. Obviously, the engineers are saying this is where you need it. So, so it becomes, I think, more of a dialogue. And, you know, what is, you know, what is appropriate given that specific location? And I think it gets back to the overall discussion of what is appropriate for a particular location. You know, what may be appropriate in the historic district may not be appropriate, you know, in another part of town where there are above-ground utilities, and there's some, you know, utility poles, and you can, you know, they are usable for, for a small cell. So it really becomes situationally particular, and, but it doesn't necessarily restrict what types of applications can be used. Don't, Bonnie, make sure.
Yeah, I, no, you're, you're. Yeah, I, no, you're, you're, that's exactly right. It would just depend on the, on, you know, what's there. In many cases, even if there's not above ground structures that's like running the lines, if everything's undergrounded, there, there could be streetlights, like Joe said. And then we can work with those. Again, he was right on. We'll just, it just depends on the individual community and what might be appropriate. Like we said, you know, we wish, if, if we could put them underground, we would, but we unfortunately can't. So we need to have something. But at the same time, we look to be the most intrusive, least intrusive that, that we can find for the community, but it's just a case by case basis.
It looks as though the photograph on the left that's currently up with the green decorative light pole is probably a streetlight that's been adapted to accomplish what.
Yeah. And I have a picture of what we did in Rehoboth on, on the main drag. If I can, if I can get permission. But that's, you know, that's okay. We can do it later. But I can, and I also have what, what Bonnie spoke about with respect to 5G. When a small cell is, when we put 5G capability on a small cell, it does require additional, there, there, we have antennas. They're both the radio and the antenna combined, but they are more of a panel and they go below the cantina. So the Bonnie's point on the design regulations, because we don't manufacture the equipment, it's original equipment manufacturers, we have to utilize what they provide us, but we work to make it so that they do, you know, fit as, as well as, as possible. And it kind of looks almost like a little donut because they're, they're like half cylinder that we put on, on the side and attach. So those can be provided as well.
Thank you, Joe. Rob, you had a question you wanted to raise, I think. You're muted. If you could unmute yourself.
Thank you, Chad. Tim, are you through? I didn't, I want to.
I might come back, but go ahead. By all means, Rob, go ahead.
I had a couple of questions. Ms. Mess, you presented some suggestions for modifying what is being considered. Were those ideas presented to the planning commission also?
They were. I unfortunately was not able to attend. They, but I believe they were provided to them. And they did accept, as I said, many of the recommendations that we had given. And so we appreciate that. So I was focusing more on the ones that they, they didn't accept. And many of them may be because the waiver provision is in there, which we had suggested. So we, we do appreciate that being added as well.
Then on the panel antenna, which both you and Joe have talked about, is, that's for 5G. Is that because 5G is line of sight?
Joe can jump in too. Hopefully he's unmuted. Yeah, they're, they're, they're just a different, the way that they work is different. And as Joe said, with the 4G, you're going to get the, the cantina at the top and then the radio is in the shroud that's attached to the pole. So there's more equipment with the 4G. As Joe said, the 5G, the antenna and the radio is built into that panel. So what you're going to see is a cleaner pole that doesn't have the big shroud on it as well. So, but, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Please go ahead. No, I was done.
Are you going to then remove the 4G equipment from the pole that's no longer needed?
When 4G is obsolete, chances are, you know, I think, I think most of the ordinances that we have in place say that, you know, if we're not using the equipment or we abandon it, et cetera, it needs to be taken down. 5G is going to roll out just like 4G did. It's going to be, people are going to migrate slowly from 4G to 5G. And so it's going to be a while before that 4G equipment comes down. Just like if you recall, when we went from 3G to 4G. I mean, we just, in the last year or so, kind of said, no more, no more 3G phones. So it's going to be a transition over time. So I wouldn't envision that if a 4G antenna is up and that it's going to come down, you know, next year because we replace it with 5G because they're two separate networks.
Got it. Now, is there no opportunity for providers, and I think Joe mentioned there's three that serve Lewis, to share installations?
I can handle that, councilman. The, on a macro facilities, we do. That's been an industry practice for years. When we're talking small cells, the spacing of the antennas is such that it really, it creates more problems than it solves with respect to the quality of service and potential interference as well as, as the fiber that is attached. So the industry practice has by and large not to collocate antennas on a single pole. Colocation can have a couple of different meanings. Colocation can mean you take an existing structure, a light pole, a utility pole, and add wireless infrastructure to it. That is a colo, a form of colocation. Another form is where you have multiple carriers on the same structure, such as on a macro tower or a water tank or something like that. We have found that, that there's too much potential for interference when you have different company antennas that close together. And I'll go back to the, the question of 5G and 4G. It goes to, I, I think, how each carrier does things a little differently. AT&amp;T, by and large, our small cells, when we deploy them, are for capacity purposes at the start. They can be and have been adjusted to do 5G. And the reason there's different antennas that are needed for 5G is because this 5G plus, as we call it, is because the spectrum we're using is different and it propagates differently. So you need a separate group of antennas. Whereas the, the 4G LTE that's, say, originally put on a small cell operates at different, you know, spectrum frequencies. So it's, it comes into the kind of the complication of how we are deploying the spectrum and the, the propagation tendencies of that spectrum. So for AT&amp;T, our small cells generally start out as for capacity purposes. And then if we want to deploy 5G plus, as we call it, we have 5G already on our macro network nationwide. And, and then we have what we call 5G plus, which uses the millimeter wave spectrum, which is what is kind of really like 5G on steroids, shall we say. So that requires different, a little bit different infrastructure that we just add on right under the cantina to the existing small cell. So it's, it's another form of colocation, if you will. But it does get to the complicated nature of how we are evolving our networks, how AT&amp;T is evolving its network and how Verizon is evolving its network and what they are deploying to meet the market challenges and the customer needs and vice, you know, vice versa with respect to AT&amp;T. Does that?
That answered a lot more than my question. I think the short answer is that at this point, technically, it's not feasible to colocate.
We, we, we find that it's, it's, it can cause a lot of problems, which is why we also talked about the, Bonnie talked about the 300 foot and the 150 foot limitation, because where Verizon may need small cells may or may not be where we need it. And, but if, if they are, if, if there is some, some proximity, then we kind of have to, you know, work on our own solutions to that.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I just, just jump in too? I want to be clear. I don't want, it is technically possible to collocate additional carriers together. As Joe said, it, the quality, we don't generally prefer to do that or from a quality of service standpoint, believe that, that that is the best thing for the, for the network and our customers. But beyond that, it also, when you collocate, you need a lot more equipment on the pole. So what we're finding is instead of, you know, that one light with the panel around it for Verizon, and you can make them consistent along the boardwalk so that AT&amp;Ts look like Verizon, you're going to have a much bigger structure with a lot more equipment on it because we don't use the same networks, right? So we all need our own equipment. So from an aesthetic standpoint, it, it also is, is not something that we generally find people want when they see what they look like.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, I had a question for Glenn. Glenn, on the waiver procedure, is there anything in the proposed ordinance that would prevent the planning commission from, from delegating to a member of staff as the Historic Preservation Commission did, and I think H Park still does, minor, things they consider minor? Is there anything that would prevent them from doing that?
There's nothing that prevents them per se. I mean, the, the providers raised a real concern about the 60 and 90 day shot clocks under the federal legislation. So being able to get it through that process, I do think, you know, there's some questions about whether we could move it through as quickly. So what you're suggesting is one option to alleviate that concern.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I noticed in your comments, you mentioned that it's possible to locate these panels inside a pole in the historic district, perhaps. All of our poles on, in historic district are hollow. Is that a feasible alternative for historic district?
So the, the panels themselves, like we're doing in Rehoboth, and Joe, correct me. I don't think the panels themselves, they might be able to be shrouded, but they're still going to need multiple panels there. So we can put the other equipment inside the pole, which is what we're doing in Rehoboth. So those panels are still going to be right below the luminary in that picture that I showed you. But everything else, other than there is, on those poles, you'll see like a meter. They're metered in, in Rehoboth. So you're going to see a meter, but that's facing the beach and like a cutoff switch, and that's facing the beach. So again, if you're looking at them from face on or down the boardwalk, you're not really going to see those things.
Yeah, the thing is Bonnie said is absolutely correct. Sometimes, you know, the base might be a little wider because we put the radio equipment in there. But the antennas, whether they're panel or, or the cantina, you know, have to, it can't necessarily be blocked from receiving the signals. So as Bonnie said, we work, you know, you work to make it the most aesthetically pleasing. Yeah.
Along those same lines, in some of our residential neighborhoods, we have fiberglass poles. Fiberglass poles cannot accept this equipment. Is that correct?
No, we're using a stronger main fiberglass, I believe, in, in, in Rehoboth. I mean, the pole manufacturers making them, and they can do it to withstand, you know, the additional equipment on them.
Thank you. Bonnie, did you have questions?
Yeah, first of all, it's Bonnie, not Boney.
Great name.
Yeah, I thought you'd like it. First of all, thank you very much to, to the providers for their information and also to Janelle and Tom West for their multiple presentations before the Historic Preservation Architecture Review Commission and the Planning Commission. And thanks to the Planning Commission for working so hard on this. My understanding about the part of the 5G network that we're dealing with today is that it is largely not, not comprehensively, but it's largely dictated by federal law. So we, and you all can tell me if I'm wrong about that, but I've, I've heard the, the federal legislation mentioned a couple of times. So, you know, we're, I think the key here is to do our best in partnership with, with the provide, various providers and the Board of Public Works to deliver the best coverage, 5G coverage that we can to our citizens without making Lewis look like a picket fence of poles since, given the colocation issues and the density issues or the, how close some of these poles have to be in order to deliver a robust signal. So that's the, that's a challenge. But the specific design standards aren't before us tonight. That'll be another layer of discussion in, in terms of how to successfully integrate this technology and the hardware that goes with it into, into the fabric of what Lewis looks like and, and its aesthetics. So I don't know, those are comments so much as sort of setting the groundwork, as I understand it, both for purposes of this public hearing and later when council considers these things. So if I've said anything that's wrong, please correct me. Thank you.
I think everything you said is probably correct. The one thing I had mentioned, Janelle and Tom, I'm correct, that the, the ordinance does refer to the, to the, to the design guidelines, right? So there is some incorporation of the design guidelines into the ordinance.
Yes, and if you so choose, you can consider them tonight.
I thought planning commission was still working on some of that.
No, they made a recommendation.
Okay, my mistake. Thank you.
Tim, Andrew, did you have something you wanted?
I just had a question. Again, I'd like to go with Bonnie. She says very helpful and did quite a bit of preparation, one of the presentation also to the, to the planning commission and putting this together. So I appreciate that. And the illustration of the, the traffic was at them. The question I had is have you looked at how those stats break down to our region more specifically? Those, as you said, they were pretty impressive stats, but how the growth in sort of the Delaware or the greater Delmarva area, those stats compared to what you showed? I assume those were national stats that you were showing us earlier.
This is Joe Dennis. Yes, they are. I have not been provided a breakdown at that granular level, but I can assure you that the, the, the beach communities in Delaware aren't, aren't playing second fiddle too many. You know, it's, if, if you look at, and I think, I think Bonnie would agree, this really goes across the board with respect to how our traffic is increasing. And, you know, folks, you know, in, in Delaware and in the beach towns in Delaware and Newcastle County and other states are, are getting very digitally sophisticated and are utilizing their wireless devices and their wireless capability in, in just all sorts of ways. And the pandemic really, if we didn't, you know, if that wasn't driven home before, the pandemic certainly drove that home in how we all are dependent upon connectivity, whether it's the wired in your home or the wireless connectivity and what it means when we have to conduct our business virtually like this or, or, you know, distancing and we can't have meetings and things like that. So unfortunately, it doesn't get broken down for me to provide in this setting. Certainly, our network engineers are monitoring this every day, every, you know, every hour of every day and looking at trends and looking at where we need to invest capital. And that really is what it is when, when a provider comes to the town. It's really, you know, we want to invest in your community so that we're providing the best level of service, whether it's for consumers, business or public safety. So I wish I could, councilman, I wish I could say, you know, give you something that was that much more granular, but, but it's, it's all.
So I just had two other questions, and one was around cybersecurity. So as you mentioned, there's now smaller essentially stopoff points for the data relay to one another. So does that, does that increase the danger of hacking and increase the level of awareness that we would need to have around cybersecurity?
I, I, it's not, it, from our network engineers and our cyber folks, it's never been an issue that, that they've identified that small cell infrastructure creates any more, you know, vulnerability because a lot of what we have is, is in the core of the network. This is simply, you know, the, the, the digital made a big difference. You know, for you, for those of us that have gray hair, and you can't see me, but I have as much gray hair as Councilman Ritter and Mayor Becker. So.
They pay a lot of money for that.
They what?
They pay a lot of money to look. They pay a lot of money to look to look that good.
So do I, yeah, I wish I did. But if you remember back in the analog days, that was, you know, that was fairly insecure. When we moved to digital, that increased the level of security. And what we've done, what our networks, what we've had to do to protect our customer information and our customer data is just, you know, is increasing and getting more sophisticated and leaps and bounds. So I've never heard that as an issue. I think it's great that you raise it because we all have to be sensitive to that, but the devices are being are more secure. And sometimes, you know, how we utilize what we do on our own creates our own problems as opposed to the network itself. So Bonnie, I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
No, I agree with you on that.
And then the last question I had was around something that Bonnie raised with the waiver. I mean, well, I should say the distances between the poles and kind of pushing towards a 150 versus a 300. This kind of plays into an issue that we're having with like natural, the the rollout of natural gas in our town. So if we're in an issue where we don't have that capability to connect like that, are we essentially saying that certain areas of the town may not be eligible or able to have the service essentially if it's not close enough? Is that, and then so this follow on to that then is is the network set up so that if there's a gap there, let's say that the historic district at large and the downtown area is not feasible because of the look of it, then does that from a connectivity issue mean that the pilot town village will have a bigger issue of picking up service there? Because there's not the stag, you know, the side by side connectivity adjacent to one another?
Yeah, the answer is is yes. I mean, we designed the network like Joe was talking about so that we get ubiquitous coverage. That's the idea, so that everything kind of overlaps and connects to each other. And that's all based on the traffic that we experience and the models and, you know, that's what the RF engineers look at. So we don't put things up unless we need them because they're expensive and we're not going to put up things that, you know, we're going to spend money on that aren't needed. So generally, in this space, if we're coming in and saying we need it, there's a reason for it, and it is to give that coverage for everyone. Because otherwise, if, for example, we're doing 5G in certain areas of the town, but then we're not able to put something up in another, you may, you know, you're going to go back to 4G. Or if you're like Joe saying, if we're densifying the network on the 4G side, you know, you're not going to get the speeds that you're going to get and, you know, you're going to get, it's going to slow down. You're not going to have that connectivity that, like Joe said, particularly now, people are looking for. So there you go. Joe, do you have anything to add on that one?
It's, I think, you know, what's important probably to remember is the network, networks are continually evolving. They've evolved from the beginning when all we had were, you know, you could use a car phone on the highway. Right? So as years go, as we invest, and we look at where, you know, where we have issues, where we want to improve connectivity, where we may have gaps in coverage, where we may have capacity concerns, we continue to examine the network, triage it, and make decisions on, you know, where we we need to invest. And those, and that's a rolling process. That is, that never stops. So while, you know, and I think this was a question that was brought up, while you know, somebody may have plans for Lewis right now and somebody else may not, that doesn't mean that the person that carries not isn't thinking about what are we going to do, what, you know, and what are not, and when are we going to do it? That kind of thing. And even if we do come in and we do some, you know, some deployment, that doesn't mean that over time, the evolution of network will demand more infrastructure. Now, it's not always the infrastructure that you see. We're always, you know, we're getting spectrum at significant billions of dollars from the federal government and deploying that spectrum, layering that spectrum so that we can carry more traffic. So it's not a zero sum game in the sense that we always need a piece of infrastructure. It's a combination of of multiple strategies and multiple techniques that we use to continue to expand the capacity and the capabilities of the network and then meet the needs of the consumer and meet the needs of the evolving, you know, Gs and those next generations. So it really is a continual evolution and a rolling process whereby a carrier like AT&amp;T is looking across its network and across, you know, all of those needs and making those decisions of investment. So to the question is, it may be not this year, but next year, as we deploy more infrastructure or, you know, certain type of 5G capability.
That raises another question, then. What level of demand are you, when are you looking at that level of demand? Given the seasonality of this community, we may have high demands in the summer and then no, you know, little demand in the winter. What, when are you looking to get this demand level?
Well, I think it's with with the beach communities, you know, whether it's Delaware or whether it's Jersey Shore, I think we have to plan for those peak times. That's just, we have to, we have to look at, you know, how are we providing service during those peak times and adjust and plan for those? So it you know, because that's the reality. The reality is that your towns are going to get, you know, much more traffic, much more population in those summer months, those vacation months. And we have to, you know, customers coming in from all over are going to expect the same level of service where they live and where they vacation. So it's I don't think that is a negative for for a town like Lewis. It's a reality.
Okay. So one more question about where you're putting this service, and it has nothing to do with Lewis directly, but are you also talking to the state park about putting 5G service in there?
We are talking, there's conversations up and down Delaware with different entities. It is based upon where the network need is and where we need to place infrastructure. It may be, you know, with DNR. It may be, you know, with a municipality or with Dell dot. It really all depends on where the network engineers are looking to enhance the network and build that infrastructure. And I will go back and say, it is a lot to absorb on 5G because each carrier kind of is doing their own thing. And there's, you know, who are competitors. While Bonnie and I are collaborating in this public policy sphere, our colleagues are competing against each other. And so, you know, we are, as I said, offering 5G through our mid-band spectrum already. The 5G that small cells bring is millimeter wave and a different type of 5G. So it can be confusing for a layperson to try to wrap their head around. It all really is about, in this case, small cells, how we can work together with the town of Lewis to deploy small cell infrastructure so that it can be used, one, to add additional capacity to ensure that our 4G LTE traffic is moving as fast as it should, but then creates a foundation whereby we can then deploy that millimeter wave 5G service. Or perhaps, you know, somebody may come in with, you know, and I'll let, you know, Bonnie speak to that, but it's, those are the kind of two factors that small cells bring.
Okay. Well, unless there are more questions for the table, I think we have some questions in our chat that we probably need to get to. Tim, did you have something else? You're muted. We can't hear you.
Dogs are barking. I'm muted. Yeah, I do have two more real quick questions. This question might be one for Bonnie from Verizon to answer. Do we, does Lewis have sufficient fiber in the town presently to support this next generation communications? Or will you need to put more fiber in?
Generally, we will put in specific fiber for the small cells. We run the fiber to each of them. So I'm not familiar with exactly where we have the fiber. Obviously, we, you know, we have runs and we can pull off of that. But for the most part, like Joe said, each of those, each of the nodes will need its own fiber infrastructure. And, you know, Verizon landline will do that in the city at the appropriate time.
Okay, because I know that, you know, 10 or 15 years ago, whatever it was, Verizon had made the commitment to lay fiber throughout, you know, the nation. And then they abandoned that that goal at some point in time. And I didn't know where our infrastructure, our existing infrastructure, how robust it is for for this level of communications. I have another question. And this is for both you and Joe. In in the small cell world, is it possible that Verizon would build a small cell network, you know, establish its nodes in a community, in a subdivision? And that they would be the, they would collect signals from all the devices in that community? And that that signal could be also that same infrastructure could be used and transferred to the, to another carrier? Does that make sense? Hello?
I guess, at this time, for small cells, that is not something that I believe we are capable of doing. Verizon or AT&amp;T, when we set up our small cells, they are based upon our network specifications and spectrum that we are licensed to use by the FCC.
Right.
And the fiber runs then go into our, the core of our network. So
So there's no, in a retail world, that would be considered a wholesale experience. You would, you're not able to have a wholesale experience with other carriers. Is that correct?
Primary.
Not in the in the small cells realm.
Okay. All right. And I guess that points to, I think, I, is this, yes, well, the question is this. Is it, should we expect that as AT&amp;T builds out its small cell network and Verizon and T-Mobile, that we would end up with redundant infrastructure in in those, in the areas where you're serving? You know, redundant antenna, redundant poles, et cetera?
Well, I don't think redundant from our standpoint.
No, not for your point, but as a, someone who, you know, as a resident would.
Here's the other, the other thing, I think, that we are still building macro facilities as well. It's not all small cells. So we may look at a community, whether it's Lewis or, you know, Seaford, and determine that a macro is the best solution for area and our customers. You know, and and so it's not, the world is not moving wholesale to small cell. It's a combination of of tactics and infrastructure that we use now. So so just trying to allay, you know, that, I think, given the, you know, the traffic and the number of citizens in in Lewis, you know, is going to be very different than, say, Wilmington.
And Bonnie?
Right.
Bonnie, would your, do you have the same answer? Anything that you can add to that for Verizon?
No, I agree with that. I mean, it depends on what each provider determines, you know, is best in the particular given locality and based on the density and how much traffic, how many, you know, in your case, how many visitors, what's what's required. As Joe said, you know, we all have 5G nationwide now. It's not, there are different versions of 5G. So the millimeter wave is where we need those small cells closer to the ground. They don't propagate as far. We need more of them. But, you know, we have other 5G, like Joe said, that may be appropriate for different situations. And, you know, obviously, the engineers and people above Joe and my grade make those decisions about what goes where.
I understand. Okay, thank you very much.
I think we could move then to questions from the attendees. First question I see is from Kay Carnahan. What is the timeline for installation and activation? And could each company release the installation plan to inform residents of what to expect? I think that's a question for both of you, Joe and Bonnie.
Bonnie, ladies first.
Well said, Joe.
So we are still determining, we do not have a plan currently that I can, you know, speak definitively about for what, you know, what's going to happen. We are, as Joe said, you know, constantly reevaluating where we go and what we do. Obviously, this was in, you know, a unique year with COVID that impacts things as well. But I know we are still in the process of determining, you know, what the plan, the build out plan around the tri-state area, which we're in, you know, a part of, is going to be for next year. So I don't have a definitive response on that. I think that, you know, depending on, you know, when that is, we will certainly communicate with the city and try to talk about, you know, what we have planned and the timeline for it, when that's appropriate. But we will commit to, you know, working with the city and keeping you up to date about those plans.
Thank you. Joe, you have anything else you want?
I think Bonnie certainly said, well, we are in the same position. Nothing on the books at this standpoint, but I think that's why it really, you know, kudos to the city to being ready to getting that, this, you know, the ordinance and the mechanisms in place so that you're not scrambling and trying to do this, you know, when providers are knocking or beating down your door. So it's, I think you'll be well positioned as providers, you know, begin to solidify the plans and begin to start those conversations.
And I just wanted to add on that, that was a good point that I wanted to make. I just, I think that this is a good first step to position the city so that we can advocate frankly. I mean, I do this when we get a good ordinance or something that's reasonable that I know is not, has crazy rates or does things that are violative of the federal law. I certainly make it known up through the ranks of the people that are making the decision that Lewis is a good place to look for investment. So just wanted you to know that.
Okay, thank you. We move on to the next question from Richard Nichols. His question is, might any new cell equipment require new electric slash fiber optic installations that are not located at the selected cell sites?
Yes. Yeah, I think that's, we do have to pull fiber, as Bonnie said, for
But electric wise, if it's a utility pole, then you're going to have electric there.
But yes, no.
Not a utility pole like the stop sign that you adapted in Rehoboth, you'd have to bring electric there.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Then moving on, a question for the city engineer, Charlie O'Donnell. Are hurricane force winds typically considered when adding panels slash antennas or plan for existing poles or new poles as well?
I can actually answer that one?
Yes.
In the design standards, we actually have a requirement that everything needs to comply with any wind restrictions. So if there's anything in building code or if it's in a floodplain area that has a wind restriction, it would have to comply with those regulations.
Great, thank you. Okay, and then Richard Nichols has another comment. He said, we should be blessed to have redundancy and competition. Thank you. I think it was a good comment. All right. Thank you. I think it's a good comment. All right. I don't, those are all the questions that are in the chat box. I don't know if anybody else has a question. They'd like to raise their hand. Give it a moment. Okay. Looks like we don't have any other questions coming in. I don't see anything. Do you, Janelle?
I do not.
Okay. So this has been a good discussion here this evening. I would suggest that, you know, we ought to keep this open for public comments. And probably I'm suggesting that today's the 21st. How about if we keep it open until October 30th, which is a week from Friday? That should give everyone an opportunity to provide any additional comments that they might want to make from the public.
No, I didn't see any existing ones in the packet. Is that the case? There's no, none have been emailed in or anything like?
None have been emailed. And I'll make sure I got the presentation and the updated requests on the website.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And can I just clarify clarify that it would be 4:00 PM on October 30?
Exactly.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, 4:00 PM on the on the 30th.
Thank you.
You can do that before you get your Halloween costume on. Anyway. If there's nothing further to add here this evening, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to thank the representatives from Verizon and AT&amp;T. I appreciate very much their their efforts tonight.
Great.
It was our pleasure. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Andrew.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. And I want to echo what Tim just said. We do appreciate both Joe and Bonnie taking time to be here with us this evening. All in favor of adjournment, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, thank you to the 13 attendees who have been here for the evening's presentation. We will keep the comment four o'clock on the 30th of October. And I'll take it from there. So look forward to hearing from you. And again, thanks, Joe and Bonnie for being here.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.